This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was presented to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right of the council chambers. Please speak into the microphone if you come up to comment. As mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, if it's repetitive or not on a topic that is relevant to the borough governing body. Harry Glazer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bremmeltler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Choohan?
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovere?
Here.
Do any council members have questions on tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session meetings of March 1st, 2022, and March 15th as distributed? So, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, we are moving on to council reports, and I will start with the councilmen on my right. Councilman Hale, do you have a report tonight?
I do. You know, at the end of the year, I think it's important to just sort of take a real quick look back at the year, and I think this was a fantastic year in my bucket in lots of them, but in economic development. And I just wanted to say a big thank you to the people on the Economic Development Team, Terry Hovere, Stephanie Kim Choohan, and Matt Hirsch. I thought it was a great team, and I'm really happy with a lot of the things we did. As you know, we have a redevelopment plan that passed for tracks A, B, C, and D. We have conditional developers for tracks A and C. We're moving forward with one in B. That's quite an accomplishment for a year. There's a lot of work to go next year, but I think it's exciting that we were able to make a lot of progress on that. And again, all of that work on redevelopment, all of that work on most things couldn't happen without a lot of the great staff that we have. And so I wanted to give a shout out to Scott Brecher, the code enforcement officer Bruce Cox, the engineer, Joe Baumann, our redevelopment attorney, Chris Cassenza and Jim Constantine are planning and planners, all just a huge help for everything of this year. You know, next year's, we got a lot again on our plate. Stop and Shop is going to take up a lot of our time. I think we've laid a lot of really good groundwork for that and moving forward to do our best on that. We're going to move again on the progress of opening Third Street to pedestrians and closing it to cars. Again, I think that's an exciting thing to move forward with. And obviously, everybody hears me every week talk about Main Street and all the things that they do. Again, going to be some incredible outcomes that they do every year. And then I just wanted to end with just sort of the list of the neighborhood preservation programs, a lot of the things that were accomplished this year, and some specifics. So, we put power on 26 telephone and light poles on Woodbridge Avenue. That leads directly to the things like the string lights and the snowflakes that really have brightened up that area and sort of made and connected to the town. I think that's a huge improvement. We purchased $40,000 worth of new benches, trash, recycling cans, bike racks. All of those are going to be implemented next year, and I think that's a great accomplishment. We did a lot of pruning all up and down. It was paid for by the MPP grant on all the street trees up on Woodbridge. We did milling and paving of the crosswalks on South Seventh and Ninth, which completed the striping and the work that PSENG, the county and the borough, had done earlier. So it's really exciting to see those things connected together. We did an inventory of existing conditions at Mollymawc Graf Park. That's going to allow for some significant improvements for next year. I think that's fantastic. We replaced the fence around the basketball court at Mollymawc Park and added electrical service out there, so that's going to be a huge thing. And then thanks to John Maron from the Arts Commission, we were able to do four pilot murals and crosswalks up and down Benner, all of them which look amazing. So I think that's a fantastic thing. So next year, we're going to work on things like the new sign for Irving School, more tree planting, more purchasing of planners, do improved parking and striping. We have a facade grant program launching, porch renovations launching, and more sidewalk grants. So I think 2022 was a fantastic year. 2023, I think, is going to be an amazing year. Not as amazing as it could have been, but I'm going to leave that there a little bit later, so I'll leave it right there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canavera?
Thank you, mayor. First off, I'd like to wish all of our residents a very happy and healthy holiday season and new year. The Board of Health would like to remind residents that in Middlesex County, New Jersey, community COVID level is high. The CDC recommendations include wear masks indoors and public, stay up to date with your COVID-19 vaccinations, get tested if you have symptoms, and additional precautions may be needed for people at high risk for severe illness. Check with your doctor if you have those needs. Food insecurity is still high. We have two programs to help. Community food pantry, open the second and fourth Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays, 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. following the second and fourth Thursday of every month. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoot food pantry every Tuesday from 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. Donations can be made by mailing a check to Borough Hall with a memo that is for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Food prices are still rising, and we have a bigger demand than we ever had before. The Mental Health Commission would like to, first of all, thank our police department for all their compassion with the increased mental health calls that you've had to answer. Your officers have been well-trained, so thank you, chief. They also want to remind you that if you are in crisis, please reach out. Rutgers University Behavioral Health Care Hotline is 855-515-5700. Raridan Bay Medical Center Hotline is 732-442-3794, or you can always text HOME to 741-741 to reach a crisis counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Just want to report that the police department is still looking for dispatchers, and we're also looking for new police officers. So if any one of you who is interested or knows someone that might be interested, please refer them to the Highland Park Police Department. On a lighter note, on a brighter note, the teen center this evening is celebrating their Winter Wonderland, and they have a beautiful tree set up with gifts that were donated from all over for those teens that attend the teen centers. And for those who don't have a gift under the tree this year, they can retrieve one from the teen center. So the Winter Wonderland theme is going on. It looks really good over there. So thank you all who volunteer, who donated their time, their energies, and their money to making sure that teens in Highland Park will have a lovely Christmas, a wonderful holiday, happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Christmas, and all that goes with that. So thank you all for your continuing support of the teen center and for making everyone feel that they have a home here in Highland Park. And to each and every one of you, have a happy holiday season. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Really just want to take this opportunity to piggyback off of Matt Hale and talk about our list of accomplishments for this year. We'll hear more at our reorganization meeting, but I think it's just important to understand as we take, you know, this break as a community and enjoy our families and togetherness and hopefully the comfort of home, that, you know, we remember how important it is to also give back to your community and to help your neighbors. And I think you hear a lot of that just intertwined into all of these reports every day and very intentionally. And I just wanted to kind of highlight a few things in my bucket. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Borough's Parks and Recreation Committee, excuse me. And there's just a lot of ongoing projects that, you know, will carry over into next year. We've invested a lot of time and effort into making sure that our limited park supply is up to date, safe, and adequate. And that includes a handful of our pocket parks. Councilman Hale just referred to Mollymawc Graf Park and improvements there, and there will be more to come. We are also celebrating a new track and field here in Highland Park that had been 15 years in disrepair and much needed for improvement. And thank you to Mayor Gail Bremmeltler and the administrative team for working so diligently, also to acquire the funding from the state in order to provide this necessary capital need. You know, we have new leadership all throughout the borough agencies, and that's also really important to highlight. And so that takes some time, but it also brings in some new ideas and new energy. And so in my area, Kim McGrar, new rec director, Anne Marie Sabatnik, and the team over there have really hit the ground running and taken over leadership from a department that, you know, had other visions, you know, previously, and now are interacting with the community in very, very different, and I feel in more direct ways, and they're doing an amazing job. They're also increasing programming and serving the needs of the community. They were nimble throughout the COVID pandemic in order to provide programming for our outdoor spaces and as well as provide space indoors for a necessary testing site. The Arts Commission is firing on all cylinders. We have, I mean, I am, as a public servant, I don't think I could be luckier to have a group of volunteers like the Arts Commission. Not only artists, but you can imagine they are extremely creative, and they have really, really creative ideas about how to include the community and how to use their limited resources. I fought really hard for, well, actually, no, I didn't fight hard at all because this council supports it. And increased, I don't even know why I said that, I'm sorry. And increased funding this year, so we can actually pay muralists, so we can actually bring artists in and do the type of investment that other towns do. Our surrounding, you know, arts is not just local. It is a regional effort. Our chair, John Maron, makes a very, very strong effort to be connected with the arts communities in our surrounding towns, and that really manifests itself in things like windows of understanding, which spans multiple jurisdictions. So, you know, we see how other towns do things. We take the good ideas, we do things, we tailor them so they suit our own needs, and we move forward. So that's been really exciting. Look forward to a lot more from them as we go into 2023. Park Stock, something the mayor has been talking about forever, has finally got underway this year. This is Highland Park's own music festival, Three Days of Peace, Love and Music. And actually, it was four days and four rain days. We see, we included rain dates on like the original one. And it was so wildly successful. So many thanks to you, mayor, for your vision, and thank you to the Rec Department, Sheila Shukla, Gary Kaplan, all those who are organized in helping to put this together. It was a really great effort, and please understand that, you know, the more successful these things are, the more the borough invests in these types of things and actually, you know, compensates artists for what they do, the more opportunity we have to, you know, to create a greater presence for public art, public music, and hopefully, you know, we can make the case to our friends at the county that, you know, maybe public performance infrastructure is necessary in certain parts of the borough. So that's really what this, you know, it's seed money, it's a toe in the water, it's the example that we have to set and then show others how the things that we want and how they can partner with us to make it better. Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, I have been very proud to be liaison to, you know, we lost a few years, I think, during COVID, but in 2019, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, under the leadership of then-council president Susie Wolkowitz, released the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, which is a very comprehensive transportation, bicycling, and pedestrian mobility plan that we are looking forward to finally implementing to make sure that our crosswalks are safer, to make sure that it's easier to get around town on foot and on bike, and to also, you know, encourage other modes of transportation. I think that's really, really important when we talk about, you know, the future of a walkable community, is that we, you know, is that we encourage and provide opportunities to interact with all kinds of traffic through different modes of transportation. The streets do not exist solely for cars, but that is the culture that we often live in, and that's something that we're really trying to change. And it's not just Highland Park, you know, it's, the county has committed through its revisioning, long-term revisioning plan, to promote pedestrian safety, cycling mobility, and alternate modes of transportation as well. So we're working very closely with the county on their vision and trying to implement things that we can do here in Highland Park with significant challenges. You know, we have a state road as our spine, but as Councilman Hale just exhibited, you know, even non-municipal owned roads like county roads like Woodbridge Avenue, it's possible to have them be improved as well. And then finally, tonight, we're going to be voting on something that has been in the works for a long time, and that's moving forward with the Raridan River Trail Study. And what that does is that it looks at a connector trail between Donaldson and Johnson Park, and that was also thanks to funding from the state. Thank you to the mayor for securing that funding. And moving forward on an incredibly exciting prospect, and I know Councilman Hale and others share the excitement, it is, you know, you wouldn't know it, but we're a river town. And I think that's really important to remember, that, you know, we have this asset, this natural resource right here that is waiting to be interacted with and can provide us with just untold fortunes and not monetary, social, community, health, everything. So that's my report, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council president, do you have a report?
I do, mayor, thank you. Sorry, excuse me. I know that everybody is celebrating the holidays and taking a deep breath in many ways. We lit our third candle tonight. Others of us lit our fourth advent candle on Sunday, and next week we'll be lighting seven candles for Kwanzaa, including strength and wisdom and family. But it's been a busy year. There's really too much to summarize in less than an hour for public works, and most of it's like dirty and yucky and out in the cold, like everyone was out today. But some things are going, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned. We have the trail feasibility, which is going to involve pretty much everyone's bucket in the coming year for the river planning. It was originally done, again, with federal money in 1995, and really because of DEP and state regulations, nothing much was done. But this time, it seems like it really will happen. We have a lot of impediments to do, including land rights, land easements, and so on. DEP regulations, I remember some years ago, we tried to get just a kayak launching spot down at the native plant sanctuary, and DEP went riot on us. But we'll work all that out. Sustainable Highland Park had a number of projects that worked, you know, in their quiet project. When the state reimplemented plastic bags, they were on the spot with all the stores and getting them up to speed immediately. Many of our merchants had already gone back to the conversion or never left it. They also implemented the adopted drain program, which coincided very nicely with the Stormwater Utilities Grant that we put out for, we are waiting for results on that to try and determine whether we can modernize our stormwater management, given the emphasis on the DEP with regard to runoff pollution, sheet drainage, and so on. In the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, they completed the inventory of planting. We streamlined the planting instead of buying too many trees that we could either not plant or did not survive. We cut that down by half, and most of our street trees have survived over the last couple of years. But they are sending out a letter to all property management companies and their services, reminding them the proper way to mulch trees in the spring because improper mulching of what they call volcanoes, which is when you pile it up instead of scooping it down, kills the trees off. And we lost 50, some 50% of our trees just because of that in a couple of years, and we pay for that. So that is, again, just a kind of a dirty, quiet, yucky thing that we don't think too much about, but that's what the DEP is doing for us and Sustainable Highland Park. The Environmental Commission was instrumental on putting in some of the input with regard to the selection of ETM, which we talked about. The consultants is going to be putting our plan together for the potential for a river trail. Also, they are still working on the outline of an ordinance and doing the background research on new equipment for electric leaf blowers. And currently, we're trying to look at whether there are some that are of a lower decibel level than, because part of the solution is noise pollution, which is a quality of life issue that we're, as council, have been dedicated to. And unfortunately, at least at the last time people were looking, and we actually had some informal citizen tests, which found that leaf blowers are still blowing at a very high decibel level, but at least not emitting the pollution. The new generation does allow a commercial grade of blower, so we're looking at that. With regard to the library, the library made a lot of quiet progress this year under its director, Kate Jaggers, in repairs. We're still waiting for the state to release the funding for the library improvement bond. We did win in the second round a grant which the borough will match for internal improvements. But the good news is, the Board of Trustees approved the much better, much more carefully studied improvements to the roof to hopefully stop the leaking problem. It will involve some substantial repairs to what they call the dog houses. Again, nice, dirty, nasty, in-the-rain project, getting up on the roof, which is sometimes pretty slick because it's flat. Where the HVAC units enter in, you can see the decorative pieces, they call them dog houses. They're ornamental, and behind them is flat, and we found that most of the leaking is occurring there. So we actually got an architect in who specializes in forensic roof repair and examination and specializes in the field of libraries, and we got a pretty quality report, and DEP is up there every time it rains, just checking things out. So we have all of that going. With that being said, just to summarize, as you know, we've started a monthly DEP report, which is nuts and bolts of where your taxpayer money is going. We have a 16-member department with 128 man-hours available every day. In past November, we had three holidays off, which left us 19 working days with 16 employees, or 304 working day, 2,400 available man-hours. Out of that, we lost 18%, primarily for vacation and sick time. No workers' compensation time, which is good news, especially for our risk management. An interesting statistic that we gathered for year-round now, for sanitation, we collected 281 tons on eight collection days delivered to the landfill, and as of November, $242,700 in tipping fees, just in tipping fees, to dispose of the pickup. It seems that a part of that may have been, we did reinstitute bulk trash, so that goes into that. So it is up a bit, but hopefully we can manage that. In recycling, we recycled 88 tons in November. Year-to-date in disposal fees, $30,700 for recycling and non-recyclables. In bulk trash, we had no pickup days. In November, we ended the program in October. We had $13,000 in tipping fees for bulk trash, but that, I believe, does add into the prior figure. We had 13 work order resident requests from DPW. Out of those 13, nine were completed, four are more long-term or lately received, and they are, so they're still pending. We had 20 vehicles repaired. We now repair in-house. We have our own mechanic on staff full-time, and she also does work for other branches of government here. 20 vehicles repaired, 10 public works, six police, one fire apparatus, and two code vehicles. Finally, leaf collection, which just ended. We added a couple of extra days because of the way that the autumn worked, was 76 tons of leaves recycled. 72 tons of that was bag leaves curbside, and four tons was sweeper pickup. And I believe that is all I have for now, subject to our final report and summary on reorganization.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just very briefly, thank you, mayor. Happy holidays to everyone. I know I'm looking forward to a little time off, and hopefully everybody else can have the same. I did want to just remind folks that the borough will be closed and our offices will be closed on the 26th of December and on January 2nd, so just keep that in mind for any business you have with the borough. And just a friendly reminder, the fourth quarter water and sewer bills are due. I know it's a hard one to keep track of, especially during this busy time, but I just wanted to remind everybody so you don't get, doesn't get lost in the shuffle. But that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, I do have a report. The last few weeks of December are a joyous time of year for so many of our residents. The celebrations of Hanukkah, Christmas, and Kwanzaa are woven into the December life of our community. Highland Park's beautiful patchwork quilt of diversity does not, should not, separate us, but unite us in sharing the joys of each other's cultural celebrations. To that end, I want to thank Main Street Highland Park and Kinetix Physical Fitness Studio for their commitment over many years to enhancing our community's celebrations I have had the unique privilege over these last 13 years, since 2009, of serving on the Borough Council for five years and as your mayor for another eight years. This community has given so much to me and my family through our school system, our community life, our religious life, and our friendships. I love our community of educated, densely populated, moderate-income residents who are not afraid to stand up and advocate for the causes they strongly believe in. not afraid to stand up and advocate for the causes they strongly believe in. That is why, over the past few weeks, I have had to make one of the most difficult decisions in my life. Effective midnight, December 31st, 2022, I am resigning from my position as mayor. After much thought and deliberation, I made this decision because while I am very passionate about leading this borough, I also care very deeply about my family and my grandchildren. Simply put, I want to spend a lot more time with those charming little boys who call me Mimi. And though the position of mayor here in Highland Park is technically a part-time position, it is not in my nature to do anything halfway. I am proud of the changes and accomplishments my administration has brought forward over the years. As you know, I have asked our council members to work with me in improving life here in Highland Park along five major areas of municipal living. They include creating a sustainable infrastructure in our municipality, taking multiple steps towards tax stabilization, actively advancing downtown redevelopment with a coherent plan, enhancing the quality of life in town for all of our residents, and reorganization of the Police Department, Fire Department and First Aid Squads. I've achieved these accomplishments in concert with this dedicated and hard-working Borough Council, and I thank you all. Phil, Elsie, Tara, Matt, Matt and Stephanie, wherever in the world you are traveling now. I thank you for your participation with me and I wish you much success moving forward. And I thank you, Highland Park, for allowing me to be your mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
There you're making me blush. At this point, I'd like to ask our Borough Attorney if you would please advise the next steps that would come into effect upon my resignation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In New Jersey, we have a vacancy law that's applicable statewide. So when there is a vacancy on a governing body, as will occur at the end of this month, the process is for the municipal clerk to notify the local committee of the political party of the individual who is vacating the office. And in this case, it would be the Democratic Organization. So the municipal clerk, upon the effective date of the mayor's resignation, will notify the Democratic Committee that there is a vacancy in the position of mayor. The municipal committee then, under the law, has 15 days to prepare a list of three residents of the borough who will be interested in filling the mayor's unexpired term, which would be one year, and that list gets submitted to the Borough Council. The Borough Council then has 15 days to select someone from that list to fill the position of mayor for the remainder of the mayor's term, which would be at the end of 2023. And that is the process that the borough will follow.
Thank you. Okay. We are now up to the public participation portion of the meeting. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda for this evening. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when 30 seconds are remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive or not on a topic that is relevant to the borough governing body. Please announce yourself and your name and address for the record and speak into the microphone if you come up to comment. Thank you.
I would love to. To speak into them, there we go. Thank you. Josh Przanski, 141 North 10th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. Also happen to be the president and CEO of The Rock of New Jersey, which is located here in the community, representing the Jewish community. I just wanted to say that I want to express my appreciation, I should say, to the mayor for her eight years of service to this community. I remember her first day as mayor. I happen to have been sitting here to discuss a certain issue in town with a group of people when we heard the prior mayor resigned and had his letter of resignation. During the past eight years, the mayor has worked with our community, worked with me. Whenever I asked, her door was always open. We might have had disagreements over the years, but we've always patched things up and worked professionally on behalf of the community at large and the Jewish community as well. And it's one who said, it's a sad day that you're resigning, but you're doing it for a good reason. I would also like to retire and spend time with my grandchildren. Hopefully one day I will, but we wish you the very best of luck in the future and we look forward to working together with whoever your successor or successors will be. Just wanted to leave with one short story. There was a power line that went down in our street. Harry and I live on North 10th Avenue one winter day, and it was out, the power was out for a few days, and people called me, how do we get them to fix the power so we can live comfortably in our house? It's so cold, what do we do? So the mayor came down, I called the mayor, she came down to the street to meet with the residents who were affected, it was the other side of the street, so we were okay. And as she left, she says, tell them all, now I will sponsor supper for them tonight at Jerusalem Pizza, it's on me. And that's a story that I remember fondly, and I think it really expresses the mayor and what she did for this community. Wasn't just being mayor of the community and getting ordinances passed and what have you, but it was also to help the people of this community, even if the money came out of her own pocket. So thank you again for everything and the very, very best of luck to you and the entire family.
Thank you.
Point of order. Are we able to respond to your mayor's message?
If you'd like to say something from the council podium.
I think we all do, and I think we are waiting for this public session to be over, then we will take our own public session.
Yeah, it'll be over soon. I'm Diane Ray, 68 Donaldson Street. I want to personally thank you, Mayor, for all you've given us. You mentioned your generosity. We all know about that. You are one of the most generous people with your time and your energy, and I appreciate, we all appreciate, all you've given us, and we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. So enjoy.
Thank you. And Diane, for those of you who don't know, Diane is my walking buddy, so you'll have more time for walking. Okay, any, okay. Do you want me to call it?
Yes.
Okay. Elsie?
I have, I think I'm the one up here that has worked with the mayor the longest. We started this journey in 2000, and we, it has been a long and wonderful journey with some interesting bumps along the way because it's not always peaches and cream, but we were able to agree, to disagree, to look at things objectively and subjectively, and through it all, it has been a wonderful ride. I've enjoyed working with you. You have been an absolute delight. You're fair, you're firm, and your heart is always in the right place. Your heart is always, your heart belongs to Highland Park, and I wish you all the best in everything you do going forward. Thank you.
Marlene Tarshish, 146 North 10th. I wanted to speak about the rent control. Just a personal comment, this summer, we had a refugee family staying with us for over three and a half months. They were looking for an apartment in Highland Park. The rents were so high, we could not find one. We were hoping for a two-bedroom. We eventually found a one-bedroom because we found a friend of a friend who decided to work with us and lower the rent. If not, the family would not be in Highland Park. So I would like the consideration of rent control within this community. Thank you.
We agree. Is there any other public comment or shall we?
Pretty much the same issue. I live at 501 Ratchan Avenue, Sandy Gomez, and myself and some other tenants here have addressed that issue. We met with Matt and addressed a lot of issues with the same issue with rent control, being these landlords are taking advantage, they're just exorbitantly increasing these rents like 45%, and I don't see how that's, I'd like to know what's going on with that and what's going to be done about it.
Right. So there is an ordinance that the council.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
Yeah, and we, I think we're voting on it on second reading, which means it will then become law.
So it's definitely going to be, do we know what?
As long as we vote yes, yes.
Do we know what the increase is going to be allowed? Are we going to reinstate it for like a 5% or something that's reasonable instead of 45%?
Yes.
Okay, great.
There are very reasonable rent increases, and we took a look at surrounding communities as guidance and that sort of thing, so yes.
Right, yeah, it's just outrageous, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the council want to say anything or should we proceed?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, sorry, thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. You can give us much time to kind of get our thoughts together, but there's, I did just want to emphasize something that Elsie's just said, is that your heart belongs to Highland Park, because there's so much negativity in the world today, particularly now, and particularly since I started, even since I started first serving in 2016. It was right before that presidential election, things were feeling very, very ominous, and I think your list, the things that you have been able to do for Highland Park are not only forward-looking, but it was also undoing a lot of the complications that you found yourself in and the council found itself in when your administration took over. And I think that's really important to note because immediately before the mayor took office, there were two relatively quick incumbencies for mayor. And not only is that disruptive, but it's incredibly challenging from just a borough business standpoint to get acclimated to a new administration, set goals, be on board with the council and make sure that, you know, you have the right team in place. So, you know, there was a real time of fluff and, you know, of uncertainty for a while. And I know when you came into office in 2014, and I took that picture as a member of the Public Information Committee then, which you have seen through as, you know, in your You have really been able to right the ship of the borough, and that's so important to understand, and it takes a long time. And you have really established those building blocks for us to build on and create and maintain success and create more success. We talked about some of your accomplishments. I'm just going to go right down the list. In your eight years, there has been so much that the borough has dealt with. Race relations, religious and cultural relations, police relations, including bringing on a fantastic new chief, Chief Abrams, who has completely changed the tenure of the department, administration, including bringing on a fantastic new administrator, Terry Hovere, Assistant Administrator Clerk, Assistant Clerk CFO and Assistant CFO, redevelopment team, rec director and recreation team, public work superintendent. You've set us up for continued success. That is an unbelievable change of leadership across the board in our municipal agencies. And while the public may not really see the fruit of that, from a management perspective, from an organizational perspective, it's the most important thing that a mayor can do. And the fact that you have set us up with a solid team that cares deeply about Highland Park and will put in the sweat necessary and creativity and outside-the-box thinking, because guess what? Highland Park, we have very, very few resources. Our $14 million municipal budget pays for exactly what you see. And we are the most creative with those funds, and we seek to leverage those funds with outside funding. Terry and Matt have done an amazing job on economic development in order to ensure that. You built a communications apparatus, and that's how we first met in 2009, at the Dish Diner when I, no, no, at PJ's, then PJ's, when, before it was the Bridge Cafe, when I met with you and Mayor, then Mayor Nolan, to talk about how the borough can be more intentional on getting information out. We didn't have a Facebook page, we didn't have social media channels, we didn't have any of that. And so, working with you, HPTV and others, and Monica and everybody, you know, that situation has really taken off and is really now baked into everything the borough does, including live streaming these meetings. Thank you for being here, thank you. Addressing the organizational concerns of our Fire Department and Rescue Squad, downtown development, we've been talking about it for years, now it's actually happening. And these are growing pains that are really, really challenging. And there's going to be a lot of disagreement and there's going to be a lot of encouragement, but these are, as the mayor has repeatedly said, the most consistent thing that you have said is we either change or we die. And that is so important to remember, that we have to change and adapt with the times, we have to be reactive, but we also have to be preventive, we have to be forward-thinking and we have to be creative. Cannabis and the weathering of the lawsuit, where the borough ultimately prevailed. Schools, our public, you know, while we, while the council does not oversee our public schools, we are deeply enmeshed and I think the public just generally, you know, we have to operate together. And your administration's work throughout the pandemic, straddling two superintendents with two different visions, was particularly inspiring. Loss of a grocery store, you know, we've known that this has been coming, this is a jewel in our downtown, an anchor. As soon as that announcement was made, the mayor was on the phone with the property owners, on the phone with folks from the industry. Matt and Terry were all hands on deck, and that is among our top priorities, I feel, for 2023. We talked about COVID, the enormous responsibility that that put on local government in order to manage and make sure that people are safe and comfortable and still can be out in public in some capacity in order to enjoy their neighbors, because that is all we have, right? And that's why, and I know that that was particularly hard for you, and I think it's particularly hard for all of us, who really are, who really rely on democracy happening in person, to having that interpersonal exchange. And transitioning so quickly to the computer makes things very challenging, and I think we adapted quickly and as best as we could. Rent control, vacant properties, revaluation, parks improvements, a new teen center, public arts investment, we mentioned Park Stock. And the thing that I think that you are, might be most proud for, among the things that you're most proud for, is Highland Park gives a hoot. I know that that was really your flagship initiative. You came into office and you established that because you wanted to intentionally help families and children in need and treat them with dignity. And that is the best thing that a mayor can do for all of the residents. Togetherness is how we survive. Yes, we have tough conversations, but I mean, I think I talk, we talk almost every day, and I have just, I have unbelievable gratitude for what you've done and how you've led. None of us is here for anyone but the people of Highland Park, and we have to use our best judgment. best judgment, good temperament, and individual and global understanding of the needs and expectations of our neighbors to address the big fundamental issues that under-resourced towns like ours face. And I think you've led through that example. We all work, we all commute, everybody up here. Many of us have or have had kids in the schools. We all grew up, lived in, or developed an interest in local government in a downtown community setting. And I think that's really important to understand when you, when you think about the perspective that this council brings. You grew up in Brooklyn, and you frequently reference your city upbringing when you're talking about new ideas for town. I had to, sorry.
Newing my kids.
I've shared so many amazing times with my mayor, from demonstrating and not rioting at the Capitol and around Washington DC on January 21st, 2017, the day after former President Trump's inauguration, from being sworn in on the council again four years later under the Welcome of its Pavilion on January 6th, 2021, when our nation's institutions were absolutely being tested and at stake. And yet, we all swore to uphold the US Constitution and the Constitution of New Jersey, and we can't really understate how profound that obligation is. You have fought political battles. You have been unfairly criticized. You have been fairly criticized. You refuse to take credit for anything because you believe the credit goes to Highland Park. You got me involved in local government, and I can't even begin to thank you or communicate how much of a part of my civic life you are. My kids call you Mayor Gail. They built a town hall in their Lego City that includes you, Kamala Harris, and President Biden. Greeting outside, sharing a cup of coffee from Penn Stock. They know how much you care. And here at Borough Hall, you have become a real leader, and you've earned the trust and respect of the staff, which from a business standpoint is among the most important things you can do as an executive. And your experience as a business owner, deeply connected to the community through your service as president of your temple, president of the Highland Park Educational Foundation, third vice president with the New Jersey League of Municipalities, gives you a unique and deeply ingrained perspective on what it means to lead Highland Park. We're very lucky to have you here in HP, and you've taught me really how to be a Highland Parker and how important it is to understand this complex, intertwined, half-donutted, sometimes frustration, sometimes frustrating, wonderful community. You've also shown me that when people don't agree, if concerns are expressed, if those concerns are expressed with facts, are delivered with good faith, and they guarantee the health, safety, and stability of the town, and if that, if the complaint, if the complaint, if the complaint is delivered with a willingness to help, then there's no issue that is illegitimate or not worth discussion or consideration. We're really lucky that you and Uri, thank you, chose Highland Park. Finally, your lack of cynicism and lack of self-interest are rare and welcome in local government. The rest of us interlopers, 15 years in, have learned so much from you and will try to lead by your example. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Matt?
Every single word that Matt Hirsch just said is underlined by optimism. Every single accomplishment that he listed, every single thing that you've done since I've known you is an unbelievable optimism in the goodness of this world. And all the things that you've accomplished are because you believe that ultimately good things are going to happen if you are a good person, if you work hard and you, and you think that the world is going to be a better place because of your efforts. So it's an amazing list. It is an amazing list of accomplishments, but the fact that you are still optimistic for the most part, that you have your moments, but the optimism that you have taught us and the optimism that you bring to this world is absolutely amazing. So, you know, I, I, in my council report, I was going to end saying that 2023 is going to be a fantastic year, but not as good a year as it could be if you were still here. I still honestly believe that because the optimism that you bring to us and the optimism you bring to this town is irreplaceable. So thank you very, very much for that. And I'm going to end on a very serious and important question. Would it be possible for Uri to go to some baseball games even though you're retired now? You know, in the summertime, every once in a while, we'll go to a baseball game. If it's okay, I'd like to be able to still take him for a baseball. I know, you know, you've got, you have some time.
Matt, I may need people to take him away for a little while.
Fair enough. But I also want to say thank you, Uri, for letting us have her for so long and letting that optimism that we learn from. Thank you so much for your contribution to that. But Gail, thank you for everything.
As the newest member of council, I came onto the council, and I still say to this day, I'm not a politician. I'm just a volunteer, volunteer who's volunteering in a different way. You have mentored me and taught me so much. I could not have done this without you. I'm going to cry, sorry. But it's also the love and compassion you have for others. When I was going through a personal crisis, you were there, calling me, checking on me. When other residents were in need, you anonymously help without getting any credit for anything. And I want to thank you for always letting your wife talk to me and talk me off that edge through some of the things I've been through lately. And thank you for everything you've taught me and done for our community.
My turn.
My partner in crime.
First of all, I want to apologize to Uri as I apologize to my wife tonight. Our six phone calls a day really were about Highland Park. Other council members have summarized what we feel and what we've accomplished under your leadership. I came on council to fill your seat when you moved up and took the mayor's seat at that time. And since then, we put together a working team, especially after I became council president. But rather than address all those achievements which you empowered council, and you kind of did it deliberately to say, it's council's job to set policy and it's council's job to lead. And that's one thing that I took to heart and as new council, and if you recall, and people will recall, that was a period of time where we were losing a council member, including at one point in time, Councilman Hirsch had to leave because he took a significant position with state government. And we were shuttling council people in and out constantly. I remember I went with Jim on a cycle ride because he had never been down the Delaware and Raritan Canal, and he was in charge of public works and was dealing with the parks. And we rode all the way down to Zarathas on our bicycles. We got back, I found that the next morning, asked him if he wanted to go for a ride, and I found that he was leaving council. So it's been that kind of a tough time. What we all took from that was that embodiment of the responsibility of setting policy across the board. It doesn't matter whether it was the painting of a crosswalk. It doesn't matter whether it was responding to someone's complaint about a pothole. It doesn't matter whether it was a $10 million contract to save our water utility from disaster. It doesn't matter whether it was trying to deal with all the new requirements of DEP and trying to figure out how we would make that budget, or balancing the budgets every year and trying to make them. It was the empowerment with the overriding watchword of transparency to which we added in our team equity, to make sure that everything that we did was considered as equal for everyone in town, to make sure that everyone was addressed. And she would insist on this, that we make sure that everyone's needs to the best of our ability were assessed. And it didn't matter what part of town you lived in, what you drove to work, whether you even worked. And it became most apparent during the pandemic when, on top of everything else, it was the anxiety of just being able to, how in hell are we going to keep this town running? And that's actually when I noticed that it became full-time. It was a full-time job, and you would think that this was a ghost town during the pandemic. And it probably was. However, there was more activity than ever, just, we had to reinvent how we did all of the things that we just talked about here on council. And it was Mayor Brill-Mittler who led the way, constantly saying the things that she first ran for when she ran for mayor, tax stabilization, equality, and opportunity for everyone. And that's my biggest takeaway, is the, not the ability, the insistence that every policy decision consider not only economics, but every single resident, both transparency and inequity. And one of the things that I remember teaching you at one point, from my perspective, when we were having one of our arguments about transparency, and I said, transparency is not a mirror where we hold ourselves up to it. Transparency is a window. Everyone has to look in and see that we're honest and true, and we, you may not like what we decide, but we stick to our word. But also, that window is looking out. What do people need? What do they want? What are they not telling you that they need? And their assessment, and that's the best ability that I found you to do. It was my pleasure to work with you doing that, and it was my delight to see all of council take that to heart and do that. And I thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your kind words. Before I start to cry, we're going to move on in the agenda. All right, we're moving on now to item number 13, ordinances requiring a second reading. Clerk, can you please report on advertising an ordinance amending Chapter 303, property maintenance, to add Article 5, lead-based paint inspection for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 303, property maintenance, to add Article 5, titled Lead-Based Paint Inspection, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, is there any public hearing on this? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and this is historic. You know, I was at the bill signing for this in 2021, and this is a result of state legislation. And this is, you know, huge for Highland Park, huge for New Jersey.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising an ordinance amending Chapter 321 concerning rent control regulations for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park concerning rent control regulations and amending Chapter 321 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Any public hearing? Please step up to the microphone. And please state your name and address.
Flaviou Camuves, excuse me, 304 Lincoln Avenue, Highland Park. Initially, to echo some of the things that were said before about your service as mayor, as a resident, I appreciate it. Appreciate when my family and I moved here three and a half years ago, meeting you, meeting everyone in the council, initially just as a co-resident, now as friends. I appreciate the way everyone welcomed our family to this municipality. So the point I wanted to, some of the points I want to bring up on the rent control ordinance. So just by way of background, I mean, I have been involved in litigating, drafting, counseling people on rent control, probably for close to 20 years. Brunswick, Montclair, Hoboken, put a case up to the New Jersey Supreme Court on that, Bayonne, among other municipalities. And several months ago, and I, sort of looking at the fact that Highland Park seems to have a rent control ordinance, but what's the story with it? And discovering that the way it had been drafted is the vacancy decontrol provisions, which is something that's a common feature in rent control, where what happens is when a new tenant comes in, you can re-rent the market, the apartment at market rate, and then it continues thereafter based on CPI increases, whatever surcharges are appropriate. However, the way ours had ended up being drafted is that when vacancy decontrol would apply and ordinarily would just reset, instead it would come off the rolls. We didn't really have rent control, notwithstanding the appearance of one in the ordinance. And so what that left tenants with is rather than being capped at a consumer, with a few exceptions, rather than being capped at CPI or some other measure for rent control, you were simply limited to the state law limit of unconscionability. And what does that mean? We heard earlier about, you know, 40% rent decreases that were not, it was not a meaningful control, the way you'd see in a typical rent control ordinance. So I commend the council for reintroducing the concept of it in town. Two observations that I've experienced in my time in working on the issue of rent control. And I've, you know, expressed this to a number of you when this ordinance first came out, trying to hope to start a dialogue about this, and, you know, I guess we're having that dialogue now. But, you know, as somebody that has been unabashedly pro-tenant, when I litigate or I draft or I counsel people on rent control, it seems to me there's a couple of things in this ordinance that could use improving in that regard. The first thing is the issue of a private right of action. Now, violating rent control ordinances can lead to liability by landlords, and one of the things that I like to do is to put in something which basically says the violation of rent control ordinance does not abrogate other rights, such as bringing a claim under the Consumer Fraud Act, being able to use it as a defense in an eviction or other kind of proceeding. And so I recommended that the council include a private right of action provision in there. The absence of one does not mean that these rights don't exist, but it is raised. I've seen it raised. Why bother? If you can put in a private right of action, put in a private right of action and eliminate the ability of the landlord to evade responsibility civilly for that. Another provision in here is the, I've read the provisions on the enforcement before the municipal court. I read through this, I'll be candid, I don't understand them. They're trying to create a disorderly persons offense. You have a very peculiar way of expressing mental states for convicting somebody of violation of rent control. Terminology is off. I did suggest some alternate language for you. If you do pass, you know, if you amend it tonight, you have the language. If you don't amend it tonight, I hope you consider it down the road because what's in there, I don't know, I'd want to make it easy for a prosecutor to go in after a serial violator and use the mechanism if administrative enforcement doesn't work, of utilizing the mechanism with the municipal court. And I'd hate to see it start with, but wait a minute, you're a municipality, you can't create a disorderly persons violation. Why are we talking about disorderly persons here? So I would like to see that amended down the road, and you do have my proposed language in that. The third thing, again, that I've found over the years, is you need a plain language guide. It's a dense ordinance. It's complicated. It's complicated for landlords, but it's complicated for tenants as well. And I'd like to see in here a requirement that the borough generate a plain language guide. This is a- This is, if I'm not mistaken, effective immediately. And I'd like to see this plain language guide enforced and published as soon as is possible. Why? Enforcement of rent control in a lot of cases depends on individuals knowing their rights. And, how do you get to that? You create a plain language guide to teach people the rights. Second stool that it depends on is robust enforcement by the municipality. The third stool that it depends on is having meaningful remedies for people, not only to vindicate what they're doing, but to deter landlords from violating the provision of the rent control ordinance. So, I think it's great that it's being reinstated. I commend to you these changes. And if you don't do them tonight, I hope you do implement them in short order. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input, Flavio.
If there's any questions, I'll...
Well, hold on one second, Elsie. I wanted to thank you for taking the time to take a look at what we're proposing. We do work very closely with the borough attorney on all of these things. And it is important, I think, for us to get something going on rent control. So I'm urging the council to pass the ordinance as it exists tonight, just to get it going. However, that does not mean that we can't amend it in a future, at a future date. So I would be happy to share some of your comments with the borough attorney. And then we can look at amendments for the future.
Wonderful, I look forward to that.
Thank you.
And hoping you have...
Okay, Elsie, did you want to say something?
I was going to ask about the Consumer Fraud Act, but we'll follow up with that later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one? I just want to make sure when, I heard you say, and when I read your letter as well, there's nothing that is in our statute that prevents someone from a private remedy as is. You're just advocating that we would add this so that it's explicit that they can do the private remedy. So it's in some respects a communication issue to tenants and landlords that there is private remedies as well.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen instances where landlords have asserted as a defense that the four corners of the ordinance contain all the remedies that are available. And you want to look at them in two ways. One is you want to ensure the tenant has the positive right of action, but can also use this as a defense. Now, that defense doesn't always work, right? It's a violation of the Consumer Fraud Act. The fact that the ordinance doesn't mention it, the judge oftentimes will say, so what? You still have these remedies. But I look at it from a standpoint of, you know, why go through that extra hoop? And if you stayed in the face of the ordinance, this is not eliminate, this is not intended to be an exclusive remedy, either affirmatively or defensively. It just makes life easier. Is it, you know, silence does not mean it does not exist. But my feeling is, I want to be an advocate for tenants. I want to give, I want to affirmatively say, this is not exclusive. I want to affirmatively say to the prosecutor, look, you can prove a violation of this and you don't have to go through some convoluted analysis of mental states and whether it's a DP or not. Why? In the interest of tenants and the interest of making sure that their rights are protected.
Okay, so I think ultimately I agree with that. I agree with the mayor that we should move forward with this and amend it later time. The third point that you made about making a plain language guide for something like this, could you, could you point us to an example of it? Because it's, of course, it's a great idea to be sure there is a plain language guide. If there is a plain language guide for a similar rent control ordinance, or if there is, if you have experience in that, I know that we would certainly love to have some sort of guide to go with a plain language guide, I guess is the way I think of it. So if you know of something like that, if you could please contact us and let us know that, a model to follow of somewhere in that. I mean, we can come up with one, we can make one. But if there's, if there's one out there that you would recommend, we'd love to see it.
I will find one. If you don't have to reinvent the wheel, why do so? So I will look in some of the places that I've worked in to see what's available for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public hearing?
I can look for one, too. Yeah, Hirsch can probably find one, too.
He does.
He deals with housing day in and day out.
I have to give it out to my tenants.
I don't see any other public comment. Then may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Most definitely.
Councilman George?
I definitely support this. And I understand the comments about possible changes. But I think it was more important to, the operative changes that we discussed in administration when we first just started coming up with ideas was number one, to streamline the immediacy of the ability to appeal, which Matt and I worked very hard on with Terry, Terry putting it together. I remember the difficulties of this old one because I tried, I think, the last rent control case ever tried in Highland Park. And it was a long, long, long time ago. And it lay fallow after that. And just, and things rose and fell under the market. But I think that what the best way to look at it is, it does call for a short and very agile timeline for the rent control board members. And I think when they take a look at it, I think they'll come up a lot of, a lot of the similar changes. As to the plain language, I think we need to, you know, summarize ours briefly. This is your right to an appeal, and this is what we have capped it at. The lesser of the CPI or 5% is what your rent is allowed to be, to be raised. So, but there is already a plain language guide, which Matt, I'm sure you know about. And when you rent a place, you have to give that out every time you renew the lease. I print them out automatically with every rental renewal for clients. That being the case, it is way overdue. It is one of the things, again, that we've set policy to help all of our residents. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Absolutely, and thank you to the mayor and Councilman George and Councilman Hirsch for your hard work on this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hirsch?
It's an honor to vote yes on this. This is one of those, you know, votes that, you know, we take where we know that we are providing, or the goal, and we have to work hard on execution, is making sure that it provides housing stability for as many, for as many of our renters in town as possible. And, you know, we're above 60% renter in, right here in Highland Park statewide. Rents have gone up by more than 30%, inching toward 35% as landlords try to recoup profits from wherever. That's not to say that all landlords are bad. It just takes one bad actor to provide, to hand instability to a handful of residents. And that is, and that's a guardrail that's necessary and that needs to be put in place. And I thank all the residents who have come out to advocate for this, who started the conversations with us, to make us aware. Because one of the things, in the absence of guardrails, all you have are anecdotes. You have anecdotal evidence, and you can point to lots, and it's catastrophic. But when you have these guardrails in place, even as we look to improve the law, what it does is that it helps us enforce and also monitor and determine the extent of the problem. And it leads to other actions that we can take moving forward to further prevent this type of activity. So yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 14A through 14G?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
On a Monday level, the Toters for Recycling along Raritan commercially are on for purchase. They've been ordered. This is the approval voting yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're moving on to resolutions that require a separate reading. I'm on 15A, resolution designating the property identified on the borough's tax records as block 302, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 30, 34, 35, 36, and 37, also known as Stop and Shop, and adjacent parcels as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, 15B, may I have a resolution, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve budget transfers?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
I'm moving on to appointments. I am appointing Nathan Ogden to the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, and thank you for your service.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes, definitely, and we need more volunteers. So if anyone out there or know of anyone who wants to volunteer for our department, please come on out. And thank you, Nathan, for coming on board.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
All right, we are open now for our second public participation. It is now, each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The borough clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. The borough clerk will monitor the time and notify you when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the public meeting, is repetitive or not on a topic that is relevant to the borough governing body. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone, announce your name and address for the record, and speak into the microphone. Anybody wanting to speak on any topic? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Bill Gorduk from 13 Lewis Street. That's off of Crowls Road. I don't know if this is the venue to bring this up or not, but Crowls Road is a high-traffic street. Leads to a lot of apartments down near Raritan River. And I've noticed, from living on the corner, that there are quite a few vehicles that exceed the speed limit every day down that road. And it seems to me a speed bump somewhere along that might help regulate that traffic. That's what I, that's my concern. It's not that big.
It's important to your community, your neighborhood.
Yeah, it seems like that could be dangerous. There has been at least a couple accidents, I think, due to speeding within the last several years.
I'm going to ask the police chief if he has any comment on that or if he can help in monitoring the situation there.
I haven't looked at Crowls Road specifically, so I couldn't tell you. There is a process we have, you can go to the borough website. In any direction there, you can contact our traffic department. We have a list of steps to go through for monitoring electronically the traffic on that road. It gives us an idea of good times to make for a course. You know, how much traffic is on that street, what kind of speeds we can see where courses are leased. And that helps us develop a plan going forward.
Okay, all right, that sounds reasonable. All right, that's what I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, and I see Councilwoman Canavera had her hand up.
Yes, they did do that study about a year or so ago. And people are speeding on that street. I know that, I live on that street myself, on Crowls. And I agree we need a speed bump. Because even with, the police do patrol that area quite often. I see them there often. And even with the increased presence, they're still speeding. So I agree, a speed bump would be very valuable there.
May I?
Yes.
We have been looking at it in public safety, looking at various methods of street common devices. And I think, as Councilmember said, that she did see traffic study or someone out there.
No, they did it, the police.
We had the POCSO a couple of years ago that measures all that stuff. So we have that data, it's a couple of years old, it's from 1998.
But I think it's time for us to revisit because when people actually see what they're doing, going down that street, it's time to revisit. And also, that could, we should take a look at that in our bicycle and road safety plan that we have. So that's, that's...
On the top of my head, that's already in there.
That's, yeah, that is, that road is in there. So we just want to let you know that we have been thinking about it. Not just thinking, but there's a plan that we're looking forward to put in place. So we, we will continue to monitor, in other words. And as the year, as we look forward to next year, hopefully next year, we can do something in that area.
Just a quick, you know, a speed bump, sometimes they actually make it worse. People slow down and hit the bump, they go over the bump, and then they get on it and try to make up the time that they bumped or lost.
And anyone who lives in that...
Speed bumps aren't the right answer.
Yeah, that's why we say look at traffic common devices.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention because a bunch of the police would likely, we can't beat everywhere at once. So we really rely on the community to come to us when they notice these things. Because I don't live in your house, I don't see you. You know, I don't look back the kitchen window every night to see what you see. So when problems like that, when people care enough about the community to come forward, they let us know, that's huge, and it's the biggest help we can have. And that will be developed a plan going forward and see what we can do. So thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask council if you'd like to forego the five-minute recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Good night, everyone, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
It's work session.
Work session.
Yeah, they can stay for work session.
No, but they're probably going to leave us. So I might as well say it now.
We're talking scooters.
More scooters.
Taxi cab rates and scooters, yes.
And how people just drop them everywhere, right?
We said not to do this and go right. That's what you all just agreed to.
Oh, I missed it.
And then also, if you're the property owner that has that, your property where the speed bump is, you hate it because you hear that noise constantly.
Yes, knobs, tubes.
I love that.
He wears the knobs.
I love to eat that.
Shot local for this.
Whoa, that's even better.
But they're very, they're very nice and quiet in here.
It was the free...
Sorry, you got through the room.
Okay, work session.
Okay. We're going into work session now? Where's Matt? Hale, are you ready? You're up first.
I'm ready. Okay.
Are we getting ready? Oh, I thought we were... Sorry, mayor.
So the first thing is that next year, we're going to vote on taxi cab rates. And I just had a question of what does that mean? Do we have the ability to say no? Do we have the ability to, do we, do we have to say yes? Is there anything, is, the process seems like a pro forma thing that we've done every year that I've been here. But, you know, especially with Stop and Shop leaving, I think that we have a responsibility to sort of reach out to the taxicabs and see if we can work with them for getting people to a new shopping area. I think we could use, we could talk to them about, in some place of, you know, centralizing what they're doing. You know, I just, I don't know what the process is for us to do more than just say yes to an increase in rates or no to an increase in rates. Or do we have a regulatory ability? Can we ask them to, can we ask for some sort of discount for people who are going shopping for next year? And I literally don't know the answer to this. And so I wanted, first of all, to ask, what is our role and responsibility? It's, what do we need to, can we say no to rates? Can we have negotiations with taxi cab owners? Who does those negotiations? And so I wanted to raise this because I really do think that for many people, when... when Stop and Shop closes, taxis are going to be a lifeline in a way that maybe that we haven't, haven't thought of. And I'd like us to at least sort of add that to the mix of things that we're doing. And I wonder if this was an opportunity because one of the first things that we're going to do next year is vote on whether or not to raise rates or, or that. So I don't know if that's a question for Jen or the attorney or who, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Ed, could you weigh in on that?
Well, you could do all those things. In other words, we, you do regulate in the code what the rates are. And they've written you a letter to say that it's been some time before the rates were adjusted. You could say no, but the standard for your review would be, is your saying no arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. And I think before triggering that and before jumping ahead and putting together an ordinance for January, it would be very appropriate for a representative of the council to meet with the individual who sent you the letter and share with them these concerns. And it could be that they might be sympathetic or understand, and they might work something out with you to say, okay, for folks over a certain age who have to get a taxi to go to a food store, we can give you half the rate or something. But it certainly, doing the ordinance doesn't prohibit you from doing those other things and talking to them about those adjustments. But eventually you're going to have to address whether or not you think the rate increase is fair. And, and you just can't arbitrarily say no because there might be a group of people in town who might need your services and want to keep the prices low. You'd have to talk to them about that. So you could do everything you just said.
Is there any state guidelines on what a reasonable, fair increase is, or is it what they ask for? Like, I, I just don't know what a, what a normal increase on town is.
You could do a survey of communities around here and find out what, if they regulate it by code, what they permit. Or we could do a survey and talk to other taxi operators in Edison, Piscataway, and other places. And then you could compare them to what the folks here are charging.
I can tell you, we're a lot less than other areas.
I would just like to add that I think it's back in '07 when we passed the, the fears that we have now. We did it for medical visits for seniors and for certain shopping areas and for as far as New Brunswick train station and Edison train station. That's why it was kept there at, at rate at that time. But I know that the costs have gone up instrumentis, tremendously since the last time. When we did that, we did take a look at what New Brunswick was charging and what Piscataway rates were.
So, is what you're saying that we do have a different price to go to the train station or a different price? I didn't know that, so it's, that's, so we can set a different standard price?
We had it back then, but that was what, 15 years ago?
Yeah, I, I have the same concerns. I was thinking about that. I know that they're going to argue that the cost, that their fuel costs have gone up as it has for everybody. So that's one concern versus the fact that if, you know, when they're idling, they have their cars running most of the time, and, you know, it's 17 degrees out. Maybe you can understand that, but we do have an anti-idling ordinance. But my other concern was now with concern with Stop and Shop. Mayor Gale, one of the things we have a weekly discussion, I, I won't call it a conversation, I'll call it a discussion, about, you know, instituting our own shuttle. I think part of that is, we have a lot of people, especially our seniors, who's very quietly and ordinarily are going to take the cab even from their location to Stop and Shop, you know?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people do like to door-to-door service.
So, you know, if they're going to be going out of town, I think the Councilwoman Foster mentioning the flat rates for certain visits, you know, if and when we determine that a policy is to X store or Y store is going to be a flat rate that, that everyone in equity can, can afford or that's reasonable for everyone is something that we ought to look at. So maybe we put the, the raise off for a little while.
So what is the mechanism that we would use to answer these questions? And I, I don't think we have to do it tonight, but is it, would it be through a committee or would it be through?
Yeah, I, I think...
Like, I don't know what the process would be.
I think what would make the most sense would be to have a, a council member work with the administration in identifying, you know, what the rates are in surrounding communities, what the needs are for, of our residents, and what the recommendation would be to the taxi company.
All right, I brought it up, so I'm volunteering to do that. It's not, I, I normally volunteer Hirsch for things I brought up, but I figured that tonight...
Am I getting this right?
Tonight, I, tonight I'm feeling generous, so I'm not going to volunteer Matt to do it. I'm going to volunteer myself to do it.
Why don't you work with Terry and the administration on this?
Great, okay. That's all I have for taxis, unless there's something else anybody has. And, okay, so in, in terms of VO scooters, Terry can speak to this as well. They're going on winter break. They go down to, the scooters drive themselves to Florida and they go down and they have, you know, a wonderful...
That's spring break, that's spring break.
Yeah, but they go for winter...
It's a mass migration.
So there's this mass scooter migration which will, will take place soon, and they will not be here during the winter months, and they'll be on hiatus.
They're following the ducks.
They're following, right, they're essentially following the geese south for, for a while. And, and so, you know, when you don't see them around in the snow, it's because they are, I think it's the 22nd, they're 20, the 22nd... Tomorrow is, I think, might be the, they're going to, we're going to...
Your last ride, yeah.
So if, if you have, if you need points for your last ride, get them, get in on it as fast as possible. So they will be on hiatus for the winter, and then they'll, you know, they'll come back. I, I thought this might be a good time at least to raise, you know, obviously when we came out of the gate, there was a furor about, you know, I think that's calmed down to, to a large extent. I think that most people have watched them settle in. I think that they are not the, the sort of, but I do think that we should ask questions. Is, are there things that, that we want to bring to VO, we want to tell them, you know, we need a better job at X. We would like you to do a better job at Y. We think that, you know, so if you have those questions, if you have those concerns, you know, please, you know, you can raise them now, you can raise them later, but, but please do. Tara, go for it.
There are, I don't care about them at my apartment complex. What I care about is there are a lot of kids under 18 on those scooters, no helmets. And I know this for a fact because my son is always getting in trouble for doing it himself. There is no safeguard for a child not to be able to get on those scooters. My son has a Cash App card that he gets his allowance on, and he uses it to pay for his scooter. And him and his friends come home from school on the scooters every day, no helmets. And they're not the only ones, I see it all the time.
Okay.
So any thoughts on how to regulate that? Terry?
Well, I, I was raising my hand for another topic. We did discuss that, and that came up at prior council meetings and in public safety. I raised the issue with VO. I don't, I mean, it is not permitted, and the underage drivers such as your son are lying when they, because everybody checks yes, yes, yes when they, you know, it's, you know, nobody reads the declarations and, and things like that. There's not an easy fix to that problem besides education. And one of the things we had contemplated and frankly didn't get to was working with the schools to see if they'd be willing to put out some communication to parents. Because I think a lot of parents, maybe you're the exception to the rule, when I told them that there was a age restriction, they didn't even know. And so there might be some things we can do. I don't have, VO didn't have a lot of good options in terms of, there's no way they can, you don't have to have a driver's license. You don't have to, you know, so there's certain proofs of things that, that there's just, because it's app-based and things, it's just a limitation of that service. That we, I, we were, last time we talked, going to try to redouble efforts around education and particularly target parents of kids in that demographic so that they could help us with that. But I mean, that's, that is going to be a challenge.
Chief, is there anything our youth officer can, can get involved with on this?
Possibly, I mean, it's an important aspect too, but that's a ugly...
But weren't we at one time thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, if maybe it was for a different topic, handing out like discounts for a free, or, or a free slice of pizza or something for kids?
That was years ago.
Right.
Those are bicycles and bike rides.
Yeah, but, but I'm thinking maybe if there was helmets available, I don't...
But they're not supposed to be on. You give out helmets and they're still not supposed to ride them.
They're still not supposed to ride them.
They can ride the white ones, they can ride white ones, but not the VOs.
Well, so, so is, is it possible that, that we could ask about including helmets for everybody? Like, there's a helmet on the bike, is that something?
I know I've seen that in some markets, and I, I don't know about VO, but we could certainly inquire, I don't know what...
If you want to get lice.
In Highland Park, I'd be very cautious about that on.
That's not working for me.
I'm sorry.
No, you're, I, I don't have enough hair for that, to worry about.
No, I've seen that, I think someone might have posted a picture of it.
Right.
Um, can I mention one other, just to get your juices, I think that's, I knew that was...
Take away all the allowance cards from the kids, no credit cards.
There you go.
There we go.
But the other kinds of things I'd encourage everybody to think about that I've been thinking about with VO as well, we had like a parking issue at the library that we've had kind of repeat, repeat. I had started talking with Kate at the library about, could we create like a forced parking area to regulate, kind of try to encourage correct parking within the coned areas on the grassy parts, not on the sidewalks. And they were very open to that, and it was just so late in the program, it didn't seem worth doing now. But now would be the time, and certainly as we roll out in the spring with, if there are any other things along those lines, trouble spots, and that's something we can also pick the brains of the VO maintenance folks because they're the ones picking them up and moving around, getting the complaints more than we are, to try to hone in on where we have some pinch points. So those are the other kinds of things, in addition to the, the safety, I'm not trying to minimize. I just, it's a little bit of a conundrum because of the nature of the application-based rental. There's a limit to what VO can do, and, and we can do it to minors, underage or not, you know? But there are things we can do, I think, also just to make it more livable and comfortable for the system. And we're also going to be pushing them for some data. Matt and I were talking about that earlier as well, like, where, where are the popular spots? Getting a little more information from them on that.
So I think, Terry, you and Matt hear the concerns here. And if you can find a way to address them with VO, that would be helpful. Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had, thanks for this discussion because, I mean, I, I love the scooters and I think we all really appreciate what, what they're here for. I watched, I watched a town hall, Mayor Cahill did a town hall with some Rutgers students. I think it's on YouTube, I gotta send it around. And they asked him why Rutgers had not, why New Brunswick had not entered into an agreement with VO whereas Rutgers has. And he gave some really, really solid answers that were worth considering. First, and I don't know if we have this provision, but first was that the city wanted the authority to actually move the vehicles if they, you know, if they, if they presented an immediate obstacle to a curb cut or a driveway or anything like that. And I think VO was not fully, I, I'm not sure where, where that was, but that was a sticking point. And then the other was that apparently VO offers a, municipality has to apply for it, but VO does offer a price reduction program. I'm not, I, honestly, I have not looked into that, so I...
It is available for income-based?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, it's available.
Oh, is that available, okay, oh, so we, okay, cool.
I don't know how hard it is to get to and maybe confusing, but it's my understanding that that's available.
Yeah, we may want to, we might want to think about elevating that because, because it's, it's great transportation, but it ain't, it ain't cheap, you know?
And they need to stop parking on people's yard.
Well, are you talking about verges, Elsie, are you talking about your yard?
I'm talking about verges and I'm talking about my driveway. I'm talking about my lawn.
Driveway, but verge is allowed.
And my lawn, I'm like...
Lawn isn't supposed to be there.
No, Elsie's right, I've seen a lot of them on the south side where they're, where they're not on the verge, they're on the lawn.
Yes.
Or, not in the driveway, but just enough on the edge where you can't get into it. So, yeah, you know, there's a simple solution. They're, they're rather heavy, but you can throw them back onto the verge and get a little vengeance out while you're at it.
There, there's a lot of them in my parking lot, my complex.
Really?
We strike that one.
They're marked down there. You know, they don't have a red mark there.
Well, that was, Tara, that's good to know because we could create a forced parking area if you have a huge demand.
We have a huge amount of them there.
Incentivized parking.
And for the library, maybe over on fourth, we have that public parking lot, we can dedicate a parking space and say, and six and, and dedicate it and say...
I think that's even too far, but people are so lazy.
No, but when, when the kids drop them at the library, you see them just clustered or when, I mean, when, when persons drop them at the laundry, you see a cluster of them, then that could be an area where they just put them...
The problem with the libraries, they're mostly dumping them on the fifth side. But on the sixth side, they're doing that landscaping, and there's that one bear area going, you know, south up to Raritan. That would be a perfect parking space for them.
That's what I was thinking about, that spot.
You know what, we have a meeting tomorrow night, let me bring it up.
Yeah, that could be a little VO spot.
Because it's kind of closing down the winter, so I'm not sure they're going to start except for the drop-off box.
Well, they're migrating to Florida.
And Kate should be familiar with that, we started thinking about it.
Yeah, 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 she is. We, we mentioned that a couple of weeks ago when we were speaking. Okay, I'll bring it up tomorrow night.
Okay, anything else on VO?
I just, I just, I just wanted to, to mention that, that Mayor Cahill did mention that, that the program had largely been safe and kind of free of, you know, major incidents. So that was really good to hear, because they've had that program for a while. And that's obviously different, you know, territory, different traffic.
Matt, if we, or Chief, have we had any major incidents with them?
They, he, he said that, you know, they are.
If you, if you do have other thoughts or questions about VO, Terry and I are going to be talking to them in the new year with some heat maps and stuff like that. So just send us, send us notes if you think there's places for corrals, forced parking and things like that. If you have any other issues, now is the time, you know, when, when the VOs are in Florida, we should all figure out how to welcome them back in a better way when they get here.
Okay. Yeah, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
The next, next scheduled meeting is the reorg meeting on January 3rd at 7:00 PM. Hope you all have a good time.